I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, on the nation of the great invisible liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It's getting dark. All right, so we have addition to the agenda. This is Keller Williams contract for 112 McGee Point. So we'll put that on as a voting item. What more? Keller Williams contract for 112 McGee Point. Yeah. Okay, so our presenter, Tim, is not here, so we'll keep moving. I haven't heard from him, so let's keep moving along. Okay, public want to speak. Come on up. Name, address. I think most of us need to know who you are, but...
Yeah, my name's Andrew Pike. My mailing address is 4622 Speedway Road up in Montour Falls, right outside of Odessa, but I do own the property at 112 14th Street here in Lockins Glen. On the way down here, I was thinking maybe I should just send an email to you guys, but I think doing things in person, having a little dialogue can always be better than just sending out some stuff. So I listened to the board meeting after I was notified that there were issues with my property there, and that kind of set things in perspective to me. Like, I knew it's been taking a while. I know it's an eyesore, but hearing my neighbors, what their concerns really put it in perspective. So I did a lot of reflecting on that. I went and apologized to both my neighbors for not taking care of my property specifically this past summer. I know I did let it get pretty bad compared to how it's normally been. Some of the stuff I heard from them, from people from the village with the property and taking so long, I felt I at least need to give a little perspective on what's been going on, because I know it probably looks like I'm just not doing anything and just taking my time and I just don't care. So in late 2012, I purchased property with somebody else. In 2013, we gutted it. We put a business in there. 2014, we split up. The house was gutted, could not get a loan for it. I had to go through private financing with a guy that I know to buy it, and 2016, I got that secured. It was a five-year loan at 6%, which was twice the percentage that you were getting for commercial rates at that time, so it wasn't going to be paid for until 2021. So that was a big financial strain for me, just trying to get that paid off in five years. Obviously, 2020 hit, COVID. I was working part-time in Delandos, making a lot of money in tips, working part-time for the Villages Rico Police Department. When the restaurants got shut down, my income got cut by two-thirds or three-quarters, and I couldn't qualify for unemployment because I worked four days a week in a week out. So that really put a financial strain on me for that summer. Luckily, I got hired full-time with them, kind of built myself back up, but prices for building materials skyrocketed in that time. So I didn't do any work on it because I knew I'd run out of money just as soon as I bought the first round of materials. So I got paid off late 2021. Mid-2022, we got a zoning variance to put a one-bedroom apartment in the garage. My goal is to live in there while I work on the house. 2023, I started to work on that, and the garage turned into a bigger project than I thought. There was four or five layers of shingles on the roof. A lot of it was rotten, which you couldn't tell because I think the shingles were the main structure of that roof. And I did make some mistakes with it. I tried to cut some corners, and I did some things that I kind of did a little bit backwards, so that kind of set some stuff back. I got called into court for work. We had short staffing for work. We have a department of five. We lost three guys in end of 2023, beginning of 2024. So a lot of that just kind of added up, made it very tough. This year, I was set to go to start working on it again this summer, and the new code enforcement told me that I needed to have detailed building plans, which the old code enforcement didn't make me aware of that, so I got blindsided with that. So I just, I kind of slept off this past summer, let the yard go more than it should've. Obviously, nobody saw any activity, so people thought I gave up and kind of brought everything to light here with that, so. One thing that I was thinking of, that I talked to the neighbors about, was looking into just siding the outside and getting the outside looking good and presentable. I wasn't going to do that. Usually, you work on the inside first so that the assessor doesn't raise your rage just by doing a drive-by. But I talked briefly with Dennis about doing that. I don't know if the village would think that would be a good solution, is to do the outside first, at least so it's not a blight on the community, because it seems like that's the big issue, is that it's been just an eyesore basically for, at this point, over a decade.
Yeah, I think, and appreciate your summary. I will just say that, so a couple things. So we have a vacant property law.
Yep.
And so what you've done is basically violating that.
Right.
And Dennis has to follow due process with that, so that's one piece of it.
But I think it's bigger than just putting siding on it. It's kind of like putting up a kind of city, if you will. Because you've got debris after debris flying around. I mean, I hear it constantly from the neighbors.
Right.
And there's animals going in and out of there. Margaret lives right behind there, she doesn't probably speak to it as well.
Yep.
So I think, Andrew, I think it's bigger than just putting some siding on a building, because that's not really what we want to see here. I mean, we'd like to see it rehabilitated or spell it or whatever, but to leave a property when people, we need housing.
Yeah.
You know, we need rentals.
And I get your story, and I understand it, and I'm pathetic about it, but we also have to follow our internal laws, and one of them is that you're not complying. And I don't know, Dennis, if you have anything else you want to add, or if you're worried or something about them, but it's an eyesore. It has been, you know it, you've heard it. We don't have to...
Yeah, when I say just siding, I don't mean just sliding siding out. I mean actually starting from the outside, making it look presentable, closing it up so it takes care of a lot of the issues.
Yeah, I mean, the garage is, there's basically no roof there.
Yeah.
And I think one of the first priorities should be the animals that are living in there.
Right, well, getting it sealed up, that'll obviously address that. Sealed up and sided and roofed on the garage and all that, that'll obviously address those issues.
So the wire that's towards the back of the house, it's got all the, it looks like it's got a bunch of, like a little canopy that was on it that got shredded. What's...
That's on an electric line. Does it even have electric hooked up to that house?
There's electric, yeah. It goes through the garage, yeah, and then into the house.
Okay, so that one line goes over the driveway towards the back of the house, which is , would go in front of the garage. There's a whole bunch of stuff hanging off that line.
That might be a cable line, if it's kind of in the middle of the house.
Yeah, it's coming off the back corner, kind of along the driveway side.
Yeah, that's probably a cable line. It's got, yeah, some stuff hanging from it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it looks awful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get that line down for sure.
Yeah.
My goal was the look here, and I would like to maintain that goal. Obviously, this is an enormous project, and hindsight's always 20/20. If I could go back a couple of years, I would have found a contractor and just taken out a construction loan and done it that way, but I thought things would go quicker and easier. I didn't realize I was getting into quite this big of a project with the garage, so that's where, that's where the delay's been for the past couple of years.
So the electricity goes to the garage and then from the garage to the house?
Correct.
It's underground?
Uh, it's, no, it's, yeah, it's not. It's probably not right. I can almost guarantee you it's not right, but...
Because I drive by there quite often, and I always like to see where the electric line is, and I can't tell where the electric...
Yeah, it comes in on the Decatur Street side into the garage. My plan is to run it underground from the 14th Street side to the house and do it properly and have it not up in the air.
I think one of the other concerns too was the chain-linked fence. Has that, has that fallen over?
Yeah, I mean, that was something I always thought belonged to my neighbors, but then she said, no, it's, it's on my property. And I told, I talked to her, and I'm, my wife now wants to put up a nice fence, so I'm all for taking that down and putting up a nice fence at some point, if that's what we both decide on. I mean, I do want to make this right. I apologize that this past summer, I just, I basically gave up because it was, I was throwing a curveball and I got frustrated. I was getting married and decided to focus on that and stuff, so.
I don't blame you.
Yeah.
It's just, I think you do have some choices, and I think the hammer's coming down from the code perspective.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to be fair and equitable across the village, and, you know, if you leave a property vacant and empty, it's just not okay, because it's doing exactly what we don't want, attracting animals.
Right.
And, you know, it could be, it's getting colder, you could have homeless people sneaking in there. We've had that issue, you know, across the village, so, you know, you want to protect your property too, and certainly you have three neighbors that would be really happy if you do improve that.
Right.
So Dennis, anything you want to add?
You know, the condition of that garage being open for a long, and, you know, I, I, it makes me question, you know, the...
The terrible...
Yeah, how safe it's going to be to, to even keep it the way it is, you know, a thousand, been vacant for a long time, so, you know, it's not even sure that the garage should, should have been allowed to be, according to our zoning law, allowed to be turned into a bedroom for residents.
Right.
So that could have been the oversight of the past code officers.
Is there, is there a timeline on that permit for the garage?
A year.
What, when you...
Yeah, the permit, I wasn't able to renew it, so that's why there was no...
So that's not, that's not really an issue at this point, is, where it's moving in there, so...
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get a permit, so I'm gonna have to work with Dennis. I'm trying to figure out a way to get something, to do something, you know what I mean? We're gonna have to figure out something.
You're gonna have to figure out a, a pretty strict timeline.
That's what I asked, the timeline.
Going on for so long.
Right, we gotta be reasonable too. I'm not, you know, we can't expect, even if I got a construction loan, you know, you know I'm not going to be able to find a contractor that's available tomorrow to start, so, but we've got to be reasonable about that too, so.
Yeah, but the village's been reasonable with the park for long.
Well, I, I...
So I hope you understand that.
Yeah, I haven't been contacted until recently. Like, we, there's been no conversation.
I think, you know, you should know that you shouldn't be leaving a house like that in a village. I don't care where you're at, so. So if you side the house, what is the timeline for that, for you to do that? Are you talking, I mean, for you to come in and present to us that, hey, I'm thinking about putting siding up now and, like the mayor just said, you know, is that just, okay, fine, is this a dance or is this a commitment?
Right, it would be a commitment. I mean, I don't...
Like, okay, so when, when do you think you would do that?
As soon as I could start. I don't know if the winter would kind of slow me down. Obviously, it's not really going into ideal time.
So do you think this would be sided by the fall of next year?
Oh, yeah.
Or in the summer?
Oh, yeah, in spring and summer, it should be fairly alive though.
And when you say siding it, I get when you side it, you're gonna close the whole thing up. Are you talking, and this is all stuff you got to take care of, Dennis?
Yeah, yeah.
We have concerns from residents that they're, they're just done with.
Absolutely.
As a village perspective, we are too, so. But, you know, we're cognizant of what you have to go through, but really, that's, it just, it's not. We've been more than fair. Are you talking, when you put siding up, is this windows roofing, everything on the outside will be done?
Uh, the house, I did the roof about 10 years ago, so that's still good. So the siding, yeah, I replaced the windows too. The windows are just single pane, they need to be replaced, yeah. Siding windows.
The porch roof needs to be redone?
Yeah, 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 sorry, that's gotta be redone. I did the main roof, the porch roof, yeah, that's in very poor condition.
What are the plans for getting rid of the animals? Do you have a plan for that?
Yeah, as far as like the garage, I mean, when I seal up the house, obviously, they're like, so the, I've had problems with birds going into the house, that's because there's no socket or anything on there. So obviously, when I side it, socket and everything's going to be sealed up, so that'll need taking care of. As far as the garage, I'd like to put a roof back on that and get that sealed up so that that's not an issue as well.
So what's your intent, to sell it or live in it?
My intent's been to live in it. My wife and I just got married, so we're hoping to start a family, so we got to find a place to live. But our goal is to live down here, but we got to find a place to live until I get that taken care of, which...
Well, that's incentive enough.
Yeah, trust me, it is, and it'll be more of an incentive.
Okay, I appreciate your time, Andrew. We got to move on, but, you know, we're with Dennis. Glad you came. Sorry, last thing.
Yeah, please, come on in.
We were, we were at the end when you came.
No, no, I think the meetings used to be at six.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, so I just came in at six, thinking the time didn't change, it's my bad for not verifying.
That's not a problem.
I appreciate you guys taking the time again. I apologize. I didn't, yes, I should have known, it was a big deal. It wasn't until I heard my neighbors that it really like sunk in, and I told them, like, I feel like a jerk, like I, yes, I should have known, but I didn't, I didn't truly know until I heard them and what they were saying, so.
I think so.
I do feel bad. I do want to be a good member of the community, like, goal is to live down here, have the house be a nice house and all that, so. I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Thanks, Andrew.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Tim.
Hey, Your Honor.
How are you?
I'm well, sorry.
Come on up, have a seat.
Sorry I was late. My GPS kept taking me up behind the building, and I actually drove around the block three times.
Oh, well, up behind the building, that's impressive.
Yeah, so let's see. Let me make sure I got... He's like, what's wrong? Okay, wait a second. You get, you get, you get, this goes to the trustee. But I do, no, no, no.
So Tim is our regional director from the comptroller's office. Appreciate you coming in.
That's fine, I have enough paperwork. While I chat with you guys, if you could take a moment to put down your email address, and I'll tell you why I'd like that. Okay, what's this right here?
That's a microphone.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, guys in the back, I need, I need you to...
It'll think, yeah.
Okay, so it's nice to meet all of you. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to come and see you. My name is Tim Profetti. Speaking of which, I should have done this while we were standing there.
Hey, Dennis.
I'm your regional representative for the sub-tier.
I need you guys to, if you're gonna talk on the outside, please, because we can't hear it here.
The office of the New York State Comptroller. You'll see my card says Intergovernmental Community Affairs. Pretty fancy way of saying constituent services, okay? If you go to the website and you can find us there, it will tell you that any business that you have before the comptroller's office, I should be your first point of contact. The reason for that is, have any of you tried calling Albany?
No, I wouldn't.
Tell me, how was your experience?
Didn't get through.
Okay, so in a, in a way, that's kind of my role for you. Let me be on hold, okay? You tell me what your issue is, let me pick the ball up and run from there. I'll be on hold. I'll do the emails. I'll stay on top of it until I get the answer. You go back to being productive in your life or enjoying the rest of your day, okay? So let me ask, how many of you have heard of the comptroller?
Oh, gosh.
Okay, okay. How many of you know the comptroller's name?
I do.
Okay, just checking. I came to work for the comptroller last year in June. My apologies for being a little late getting around to see you. If you'll give me a little grace, I'll tell you what my territory is. Cataragus, Allegheny, Steuben, Schimung, Tioga, Skyler, Broome, Cortland, Shenango, and Atsigo.
There, Lord.
Okay.
Figuratively.
And I live in Cortland County, so I'm, I'm a stone's throw away figuratively speaking. This is not my first time in the county. You could ask around. I know it's no consolation to you that this is the first time I'm getting to you, but I've been in the county office building numerous times. When those offices are open during the daytime, it tends to be a little easier for me to get around. When I came to work here, I thought I knew what this office did, and I wasn't even scratching the surface. So what is the number one function of the comptroller's office? Anybody want to hazard a guess? Those of you with pensions, I know what you think it is.
Well, there's three of us in here with him.
Yep, that's one of the things. But the New York State Comptroller is the chief financial officer for the state of New York. Our number one function is waste, fraud, and abuse. So we're the ones that come in and audit towns, and that's LGSA, Local Government School Accountability. I'm sure some of you are aware that last year, we did an audit of your town of Hector, and we issued our report on that. We don't play games of gotcha. I can attest to that. I hope you'll take my word for it upon meeting me here for the first time, but if you've followed anything we've done, we don't play games of gotcha. When we come in to do an audit, it is a teachable moment. We appreciate the citizen legislature. We know that's how local governments run, with people that donate their time or do it for a very modest income stipend, basically. Somebody wants to run for town clerk, they think $3,000, $4,000 will be a nice supplement to their income. They get in office and very quickly realize that municipal accounting is not like balancing your checkbook. So when we come in, it is to say, here are policies, practices, procedures. If you do these things, you will have a successful career as your town clerk. If the matter becomes criminal, that's a you problem, not a us problem, we did not make you take the money. You may have seen last summer, the Tioga County, one of your neighboring counties, the mayor of the village of Camder. Anybody remember that?
Oh, yeah.
You didn't hear about it?
I did.
Took $23,000 from the general fund he had a debit card. Put 19 of it back, but that's not the point. Never should have taken it to begin with. Also last summer, little bigger splash, the village of Addison, Steuben County, the village clerk, 1.1 million over her career. The first individual in New York State under a law that was passed in 2011 and it was amended in 2018 to forfeit their pension as part of the plea agreement, all right? Now, let me say though, once it gets to that point, we just do the audit. Once we find criminality, we turn it over to the district attorney and the state police. The forfeiture of the pension has to be in agreement between the DA and the defense attorney, and the judge is the one who determines whether or not to sign off on it. Whether we like it or not, we follow the law. Is the spouse entitled to the pension? Did the spouse commit the crime? Okay, there's a lot of things that, it gets into the court and they decide it, not us, okay? So waste, fraud, and abuse. What else we got? We have the pension. Let's deal with the pension. The comptroller is the sole trustee of the New York State Pension Fund. It is constitutionally guaranteed by the state of New York, so it'll be there for you. Here, thank you. Okay, and the reason, I'll tell you why I want that moment. On the paper I gave you, the number 267 billion, it says is the value of the pension fund. We were only able to do the valuation on that after they passed the budget, so that was around May of this year, but it was updated about three weeks ago. The value of the pension now is 284 billion. Comptroller only expects a rate of return 5.9. 5.9% comfortable with that, okay? We are, and I was told this, I've got a, I, I thought we were the third-largest public pension fund. Somebody just said last week that we are now, we have just surpassed California, but I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah, so that's a target where we're really at. So what, you said you expect to be at 5.9. What is...
Right now, for the year, we're at about 5.8.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on target. It's slow and steady.
Thanks.
Okay, the comptroller is very, he has a good group of people around him advising him. He's very conservative. He doesn't take a fly on things because he knows that money is not his money, it is the pensioner's money, all right? It is 93.7% funded. That is considered fully funded. Now, even for the non-pension holder, the healthier our pension is, the better it is for the non-pension holder who's a taxpayer, because who makes up that other 6.3%?
Right.
On behalf of the employee contribution is the municipality. So the better funded we are, the less you have to contribute at your end, okay? So that's in good order. Office of Unclaimed Funds, who's heard of this one?
Oh, I got money.
Is it, is it still in there? Did you collect it?
No, no, I got it.
Oh, good.
It's like $75.
All right, it's your money.
Yeah, it's fun to go in there.
So when I came to work here last year and I cut my teeth on it up at the state fair, how many of you have been to the state fair and seen our booth up there that they have about 12 terminals?
Yeah.
And everybody's in a pretty festive mood from a day on the midway and up and down the restaurant. Free money! Where's my free money? It's not free money. If it's on the website, it's your money, okay? And I gave you a handout that shows you where a lot of that comes from. Can be banks, right? You never get the courtesy letter from a bank that says, due to inactivity, maybe you should come down here and throw a couple of bucks in this thing, right? You get the letter that says, due to inactivity, we're closing your account, we'll turn it over to the state of New York. However, they have three years to hold that money, okay? And then when they turn it over to us, and again, legalese, I don't like it because it's called abandoned property. And you didn't, you know, I mean, you didn't do anything wrong. You forgot about it.
Mine was a gift card, which I thought was weird.
We're the gift cards now too, yes, gift cards. Some of it's stocks, all right? I can tell you a friend of mine, I, you can look anybody up in there, and it was, since we're coming up on the holidays, look up your family. You'll be the toast of the town at Thanksgiving if you can say to a brother or sister or somebody, hey, you've got some money there, go claim it. Friend of mine, I was noodling around, I saw that her deceased father was in there. I called her, I said, you might want to check this out. She did. She let me know the check showed up. I asked her how her experience was. She said it was fine, you know, she had to reopen the estate. It was a MetLife insurance policy. Now, I didn't ask because I'm not entitled to know, but she blurted it out. Oh, it was 8,400 bucks.
Okay.
Not bad for a little bit of work. I do not have the ability myself to look behind the curtain, because I'm not with the dedicated Office of Unclaimed Funds, but when you're dealing with them directly, if you have a claim in there, once you interface with them, especially if it's an estate matter, you can find out how much money it is, all right? And then you can make a decision there, because if it's going to cost you $1,000 to reopen an estate, to get back $100 that you have to split five ways with your siblings, is it worth it? Okay, you may say, you know what, I don't want to pursue this. And that's okay, and understand this, just you saying that you don't want to pursue it gives this, our office and the state no claim to that money. It will sit there in perpetuity, okay? It'll just stay there, because who knows? Maybe one day, somebody will come along in the family lineage and say, that's worth it, for whatever reason, all right? We've been collecting the funds since about 1941 or '42, so we do recommend for people to check your maiden name, if you're married, check your maiden name to see if something might have slipped through the cracks before you got married. Last year, the legislature passed the law, the governor signed it, it went into effect on January the 15th. However, it's not retroactive. Moving forward from January the fifteenth, any claims two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or less, if we can attach you with what's been reported to us, we're just mailing out checks. Okay, if it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or less. We're working through some hiccups with that because the check shows up, just like our state payroll checks, with the perforated sides and the flap on it. We didn't have the ability to put a letter in there of explanation. So, what do people think when it shows up? First of all, it's got an auto address on it, so maybe it's garbage, junk mail. They throw it in the junk. They open it up and see it's a check for a hundred-and-fifty bucks and figure they're getting scammed. Right? So, they don't cash it. So, where's the money? Stays right in unclaimed funds. If that ever happens, take the check to the bank. Take the check to your bank. They'll tell you whether it's good or not. But, we're working through that. We'll get the word out better so people know if that check shows up, please feel free to go cash it. It's yours, we want you to have it. All right? Now, the reason I did ask for the email addresses, something I've taken to doing is I, I create listservs. We have a division, it's called Budget Policy and Analysis. Have any of you ever read any of our reports? They are on our website. No? And I, if, now that I got your emails, I will either send it tonight when I get home back in Portland or I'll send it out tomorrow. We just did the quarterly report on sales tax.
I forwarded that to the board of the.
Oh, right, because I did send that to you because I did have yours. So, that's what I'm going to do with it now that I have everybody else's.
Yeah.
Now, we drop a lot of reports, about one a day, almost. I'm not going to inundate you with reports. This is not a, I'm not going to do a data dump on you.
Thank you.
Okay, we did a report on, a lot of reports are on MTA. Not something you folks really care about. And we can be honest, even though we're being recorded, fine. You don't care about the MTA, do you? That doesn't affect you. We did a report on teenage unemployment in New York City. Okay, that, that's not something that affects you here in your day-to-day lives or how you try to govern in your community. I won't do that because I don't want you to become desensitized to the reports that I am sending you, which would be the sales tax. We put one out a couple of weeks ago, maybe I'll follow up and include that so you can see something else that we do about, it's good, because it cuts at the federal level, we're going to have a shortage of healthcare professionals in rural areas. That's something that'll affect you. So, those are just things I want you to have. You can, you can read them, you can delete them. It, it's just another tool in your toolkit, that's all. All right? Because I do live as close as I do, whether I did live close or I don't, I shouldn't have said that, bud. You've got my card. If you've got a question, reach out. You know the dumbest question is the one we don't ask. All right? So, that's what I'm here for. Fill my dance card out. I work for you at the end of the day. Right, what are you checking, to fill my dance card out? That's what we're supposed to be out here doing, is helping people. And, and what I'd like, and what we'd like to try to do is get to people before you've hit that frustrating point of the being on hold. Okay? Of the email, right? But, I'm going to defend the bureaucracy. You know, the governor, the governor says we have nineteen thousand job openings in the state of New York. Do we need to fill all nineteen thousand of them? Probably not. But, if you're going to have a government, you've got to staff a government. The pandemic did create a situation where people that were fifty-five and had their twenty years or twenty years or better, there was a mass exodus to the door. Tier six is not necessarily a recruitment tool.
That's for sure.
Although, although, we do still remind people it is a defined benefits package. You don't find those around a lot anymore now, do you?
No.
Okay. People who are in tier six should also think about New York State deferred cap. Make sure that you're taking care of yourself. So, in defending the bureaucracy, we have less people in the call center able to answer the telephone when you're calling in there. But, if you do send an email and you go to the website, and the website says, "Twelve to fourteen business days for a reply," and you proceed, what is that bureaucrat in Albany supposed to think? You've, in a way, entered a contract with them. I've got twelve to fourteen business days to respond to this. Maybe they respond sooner, maybe they don't, maybe it is on day twelve or day fourteen. Send the email to me. Go back to being productive, enjoy the rest of your day. I'll get back to you when I got an answer. All right? And let me say this, too, they always caution us, "Under promise, over deliver." And I can tell you sometimes the answer's no. Just know that, the answer sometimes is no. All right? Does anybody have any questions?
What if we, what if we have something really urgent? That we need something prior to twelve to fourteen days out?
That's what we can try to do to help you move along on that. The, okay, so, I can, constituent matters are private matters. So, I'll say it more anecdotally in that I won't even tell you what area it occurred in in my territory, but I received a phone call from an assembly member's office that a guy was getting his deceased brother's pension, and pensions told him six months. My response was, "Okay." Because in my head, I'm thinking a little bit that, yeah, we've got to verify some things. We're going to give a deceased person's pension to somebody. Well, the office explained to me why this guy didn't necessarily have six months to wait. And that was because he spent his entire life savings caring for and bearing his dead brother. Okay. We were able to put a human face on it, is what we were able to do. In about forty-eight hours, the response was, "He'll get his first check in three weeks." All right? Those are some of the things we can do. I had an individual whose father in another county downstate was going to lose his Medicaid because he had some deposits that VSS wanted explanation of benefits. One, she was very easily able to identify because he said Chase Manhattan. She was able to see where that was in his, you know, bank ledgers. There was a check that said OSC on it, that's us. And she reached out. I ended up having to put it into Albany. This ended up having about eleven people get involved to track down where this came from. And we were able to identify it. We were able to do it in less than twenty-four hours. And we saved this woman's father from losing his Medicaid assistance. Because we were able to put a human face on it, right? And then, sometimes, if, you know, if, if you're tier six and you're thirty years old and you're trying to get something from back before two thousand and nine for a tier reinstatement, but you've still got another twenty years ahead of you before you can retire, you can wait. Okay, and that doesn't necessarily get the priority. We know you've got another fourteen years left in your career. That maybe doesn't get bounced to the top of the pile. But, if there is exigent circumstances, that's what we're here to try to help with, to put the human face on your story. Any other questions? Anything, you got something for me?
Yeah, Tim.
Yes, sir.
What are the top three funds that you guys?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I'm just, that's Tom and his advisors. I, I'm not the money guy. I'm the, I'm out in the field gladhander to help you. Do you want me to find out what they are?
No, I was just wondering what the top three were that they invest in to drive up the fund balance, the two-hundred-and-eighty-five million.
I don't know.
You know, thanks.
I don't know. But, we do caution, too, the pension fund should not be a political football. And we hear it, we, we hear from people what we should and should not be investing in and, you know, it's, it's not, at the end of the day, you want a healthy pension fund. And that's our focus.
For good?
Yeah.
Appreciate your time, Tim.
Like you say, this is not the, what's the saying? It's not the beginning of the end, it's the end of the beginning. Because since I get to manage my time, this is such a beautiful little village. We'll just have to find more reasons to come over and interface with each other.
Sure, we can come anytime.
Well, you'll see me a lot in July and August.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Stay nice and clean with you, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, dear.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion on the minutes of October twenty-one, please.
I'm going to motion approve the minutes for the Reg and Board meeting held on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Carrie, thank you. All right, hearts stays. I know you got it, is tonight the dinner?
Oh, it was first? Yeah, it started at first time.
Oh, okay. I, I was, uh.
What's going on?
Some people got a dinner.
I didn't know if you had to run off, that we were holding you up.
The U.S. Center's got something on, seems like every day the next couple of weeks.
Cocoa bar still going good?
Yeah, we're kind of living in on the offerings from times because I know they want some later times, but between everything that's going on in the facility, it's murder people, hours.
Yeah, that building is really pumped up.
Yeah.
And are you, I, I read in your notes, are you looking at maybe renting out that kitchen a little bit?
Yeah, I think it's something to explore.
Maybe for spring?
Yeah, I think definitely it takes some planning to do. And I don't think it's a bad idea for the facility. I mean, it's used a lot in the winter, but it's bringing, I mean, for the kitchen to get used since it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can do that now for the Department of Health that, you know, it's a certified kitchen. Kind of going to do and stuff like that.
Yeah, it might be like for food trucks or something like that. I mean, I could.
Yeah, so, I was thinking more the food trucks. I mean, if we want to be a food storage facility, you know, just kind of.
We don't have room for that.
Yeah, I think that opens some liability in our. Um, lucky it, after we got shut down on Monday, so it was cool for the season now. But, the food park after remains open through the winter.
Did they work more on the sign today? I forgot to go down there.
They were over there, I didn't go off, but they were over there most of the day today.
Okay. Good. Anything else, Stacey? Um, one thing Stacy mentioned yesterday when we were meeting with her is they want to bring the midget wrestling back for June sixth.
June sixth is the first date. So, you don't need an official confirmation, but, you know, or it's open to a copy back, at least I'm going to totally kind of determine for the. I mean, we sold out the last event, it seemed to go very well.
I had a ball.
I know, I was talking about you and how much fun you had. The other thing that Stacy brought up that I think is important for the board to consider is that, you know, the parking system is a new pay system, as we know. People have been a little confused by that because we've always charged for parking park. However, when we were talking about it and Stephen was there, charging for the winter doesn't feel right, at least during our discussion. Because we get the ice rink up, that goes, and then we're going to turn around and charge somebody eight dollars to park, you're going to deter. It's already deterring people from using the park this time of year. Stacy's seen a difference. You know, somebody just wants to pop in and, you know, take their kid to the playground for a half an hour. So, we need the board to think about that and give us some input because I, I tend to agree with Stacy that I think it's, it, it's not the right thing to do for the winter. We've never charged in the winter.
I agree.
I know that we talked about, at least with Peter, I did, you know, at twelve months, you know, charging. So, I don't know what the board's thoughts are on that, but like your input.
Well, my thoughts on it was just running it, you know, like the state park, you know, the remaining try to shut us down, the garden, maybe kind of, you know, what we have going, the park shuts down after, you know, our season ends and then they stop charging for the parking. You know, kind of like a seasonal, you know, seasonal.
When the camper show up, open it up.
Yeah, maybe when they're beginning and end of camping season, give a timeframe.
So, are you thinking like November first to April first, maybe, or?
Yeah, so, like, I think next year, is it like October sixteenth, I think is the next camping, yeah. You know, and then, you know, of course, in many, we have, we open in April, the camping season, so, like, you know, April, December, October or something.
Yeah, I like even numbers.
Yeah, I don't agree with charging year-round. I, I didn't realize that was, when we were down there, I was, I saw it, I was like. I just think we should run out of like a seasonal.
Maybe.
Is this just for crew park?
Yeah, just for crew park.
Just for crew park, not the boat launch?
I mean, boat launch kind of dies off.
Yeah, no, that, that kind of takes care of.
One kayak, the kayak launch, launch, it kind of dies off also. So, why wouldn't we add that to the crew park?
Well, it's all kind of a part of.
Yeah.
It's all considered a part of, okay.
All right.
Yeah, this time of year, with like the boat launch, we'll see like maybe one person parked down there that's in a fisherman or something, maybe two, sort of, you know. One thing we want to consider of the boat launch for those, it is an overflow parking for us. We're like, like we have the fire candy coming in there in two weeks for the arsenal training, so.
Fishing show, gun show, stuff like.
Gun show.
Yeah, I think you just have to tally them for those things. Just like you did for that craft thing that the. Fred, do we have the ability to shut that off for just that section?
Um, I would just bag them.
Bag them?
People are still going to come in and they're still going to just try to read and scan there. They'll just put, collect bags over them or something.
I'm pretty sure we have the ability to do that, to black it out.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I talked to them about it. They said that it is.
Certain dates, you can black out certain dates. I'm pretty sure we talked about that.
But, I think you're right.
I just think it'd be better than bagging.
I think, I think that, you know, makes more sense because then you're not having someone stand there trying to scan it.
Well, that's what I mean, is there's someone to scan away and then get a message or something that says something. But, I don't know what the capabilities are yet, so I haven't, because we haven't done that yet, so.
All right, so, are we in agreement to November first to March thirty-first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you have Sky or somebody go back in tomorrow morning?
Crazy about it, okay.
All right, um, let's, let's add, we, we probably should vote on that.
Uh, make a motion to.
We have to get to the department.
Yeah, we got to add it to where we.
Oh, I thought we were already in.
No, we're not there yet. We're still, we're still on department reports. But, uh.
November is this?
November first to March thirty-first. All right, anything else, Stacey?
Uh, I hope that was it.
I think that's all I had from yesterday. We will be, we'll, we'll be talking in a few minutes about, we're going to do the staff luncheon again, so we'll figure out a date for the event center for that.
Okay. Yeah, I think in December, it's mostly just regents, you know, so.
Okay. Thanks, Stacey. All right, no streets. Dennis, anything else besides your report here?
Um, I noticed on the agenda that you've got the, the Stavola.
Oh, yeah.
I talked with Reading today, and they've already put aside money and set, set that up for, for me to do that. I don't know if you guys want to talk to them about the cost. But, that is three days in December, I believe it's tenth, eleventh, and fourth.
Yeah, so, we had tabled that because you were sick that night. But, also, we had a question about, you know, how much training, you know, because it's three days out of the office, that's my biggest concern because of the workload.
I understand, this is a mandatory training.
Okay, so, it is mandatory, and that's something that we didn't know.
This is, this is the training for all the new codes that have come out. There's four-hundred-and-twenty-five changes to the codes for this year for the new code cycle coming out, the twenty-twenty-five code. Most of those have to do with the electric or the energy. There's some fire safety codes in there that people have developed, but this one, this is a mandatory one for all the, all, all the goings.
Okay. So, we'll get, we'll get to that under voting items. Was there anything else? I noticed, sounds like the building back here is going to be ready to go for demolition?
Yeah. So, they've. So they've, uh, they were approved by the planning board, uh, the only concern that they had was the setback, but we're able to meet those.
Yeah.
I do have one question, there's, the tree that's back there, uh, does he really need a tree permit to, to take that tree down?
I don't know, we should look at it.
That thing is like right on the village, right in the line?
It's on the right of way, but also there's wires going all through it.
Going into the wiring tubes.
Um, can you check on that? You know what, you know what tree we're talking about, that's right next to...
Is that on the north side?
It's on the, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the north side, but it, yeah.
At least one time I've looked at it.
It doesn't look like it was actually planted by the village, it's just one, it's like rolling.
It's just, yeah. It popped out of the root.
Right.
Any idea when they're gonna be taking that down, because we certainly gotta rearrange that back parking lot?
As soon as I get them, the, well, I, I gotta finish doing the front, one demo for another, and then, uh, once that's done, yeah.
And then the McGuire one, so that came down pretty quick?
That came down today.
And, and so they're working in there, I haven't seen anything the last couple of days.
They did, uh, did repair the sidewalk, um, they had some of the plantings in there, some of the, um, I'm sure they're gonna do more.
Yeah, it's kind of a tough time to plant.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. Ethan, anything, uh, how was Halloween, besides windy?
Hey, I had a great turnout, um, I was not feeling well, my daughter was sick as well, bearing down, she tried out today, we realized she got a handful of health, but... So, it was good though, and a good time, got rid of like five of the candies very quickly.
Wow.
Nice.
Fire department too? And then, did we have other businesses there?
Uh, there was a handful, there was probably a total of, if they said like eight or ten, over there.
Yeah, I got a lot of positive feedback about it. They said, uh, a lot of people commented that they loved it, and they liked that the street was blocked off.
Yeah, I don't think we did that the last year, I mean, we kind of tried to be careful, it was a lot easier to have it blocked off, it's true, because it'll be near.
Okay.
That was good.
I got a call, I haven't talked to you, you have to take back calls about the bus again, being parked out there.
Back out.
That's what you said. So I'll just let you know, I'll go send somebody over.
I know, I wonder what she does with it, if it's not a spook house?
Yeah, where else to go?
I, I don't know, well, maybe she'll use it for Christmas. All right. Thanks, Ethan. Charlie? I have something for you, um, so I noticed on the report that you guys are thinking about doing something at Village Christmas. So... You what?
I was going all.
Yeah, we're gonna do it, at least we want to do it.
So...
Yeah, so it gets like a swap, they have like the tall buildings over that way, and their SWAT team rappels over the side of the building, one person's in the same outfit, a couple of are, are in alpotes, and they just have a backpack of like little tiny stuffed animals, you know, a little dollar paid for wall, whatever.
Yeah.
Like halfway down the building, lock themselves off, and throw stuffed animals out to the kids and stuff, and we're gonna do it.
I think it's super cool.
It'll be awesome.
Yeah, that's right. So what building?
Stacy, can we use Kevin's castle?
Well, so, I, I would ask you to get in touch with Michaela Christensen, who's the Watkins promotion, so, because they're putting it on?
Yeah, hook up and talk with them.
Yeah, because...
I just want to find a building first, I actually was looking into Londo's, but the overhang on those things is so big, and I don't know if they can handle the stress from us hanging ropes off the edge, and I don't want to damage anything.
Yeah.
But we want to do it and have a fun, but we don't want to damage anything.
Well, I was thinking about this building, but I don't know about our roof.
This one has a pretty good overhang too.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know, I have to get up there and take a look at it, but I think Kevin's Castle's...
He has a sale now up there.
Oh, boy. I think they'll be afraid to move down the roof.
Uh, Gibleton's.
Jimmy, Jimmy Gibleton?
Yeah, that might be an option.
Yeah, I'll check it out.
Yeah, I think they...
You don't, you don't own that building?
No, they should make your own, that, but I can message them, I don't see a problem with that.
It's neat though, I haven't seen it, because they have like good videos up, but, and I don't know, it's pretty cool, people love watching Santa rappel down the wall.
Oh, it's a fun idea, I think it's great, just want to make sure that you coordinate with the committee, because they got a lot of different stuff going on, but...
Yeah, I was gonna wait till, you know, the start of next week or so, and get in touch with people, and kind of walk down the street, and, uh, I want to make sure I know our, our options, make sure I know that there's good anchor points up there, safe anchor points, but if we can't do it safely, we'll throw it away. But, if we can do it safely without damaging anything, cool.
Yeah, it'll be fun, I was envisioning flying over the top of this roof, and then I thought about the windows, I'm like, oh no.
It's like the military movies you see, like, fire department, road rescue, everything is, is static, not dynamic, right? So there's no stretch to it, we're, we're not like pushing ourselves off and bouncing down, you just walk over the edge and walk down a building. But it'll still be fun.
Yeah, I think it's cool.
Yeah.
I think it's great. Nice addition, really. Um, so Charlie, just so you know, that fire contract is not gonna be discussed tonight, because we've got to get with the assessor's office. I know Jason's wanting to get this through, but we're not ready.
Okay.
So we didn't put it on the agenda, and I think, was that why you came?
You know, he told me that, that there might be questions about it or something like that, we didn't say in the mathematical equation, we hit the town of Redding.
Yeah.
I, from, it's my understanding, they're voting on what to use Thursday?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe they can table it, I don't know, maybe...
Well, we...
I don't know, is it legal for us to call them, and be like, hey, can you wait a week, or two weeks, or whatever, I don't know?
It's not illegal, no, but they, they shouldn't be voting on something that they don't really have the contract for yet.
Right.
I mean, we have to, they're budgeted.
I haven't been able to figure it out, but, well, we have a contract, so I'll just go with Montour, I, I have no idea.
Yeah. Well, Jim Ryan didn't even know about it, so...
Didn't know.
That there's gonna be a change, because aren't you, you're covering part of what Montour was covering, correct?
Well, that they're already...
Basically, Montour took it from us.
Right.
Yeah.
And you're getting it back.
We would just be getting it back, yeah.
But, right, but, so he has money that's budgeted that, from the town of Dix, that, because our budget year is different, which is kind of a pain, because it's...
It is.
June to...
It will be a little bit different.
Yeah.
And is he still under the three-year contract of that?
This is the last year, twenty-six.
It would be the last year.
Yeah.
It would be due this year, twenty-six. So we would, we would hope to do the same contract with the same mathematical principles that we did with town of Redding, except, uh, with the town of Dix, we would hope to do three years with a three percent increase each year. But yeah, if you guys, if you guys need to get a hold of...
We're just not, we're just not ready, we just couldn't, I mean, there's, there's so much, I just told Fred, like, we can't rush this through, we gotta, we got one more step we gotta do, and then we'll do it, but... Um, was there anything else for Charlie that...
That was the only thing that Jason wanted to hear from.
Yeah, that's, that's why you're here.
Okay. Anything else, Charlie?
Nope.
All right, I'll take a motion to accept all department reports, please.
I'll make a motion to accept all the department reports.
I'll second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, Carrie, thank you. All right, let's get on to voting items, because I have a bunch of board concerns. All right, first is the Dennis's mandatory training for December 10th to the 12th.
I'll make a motion to approve STBOA training for the code enforcement officer on 1210 through 1212. Um, cost is two hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage, to be split with the town of Redding.
A second. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, no opposed, thank you. All right, next is the approval for Scott Taylor, this is part of his negotiations.
I make a motion to approve an increase for the street and building and ground supervisor, Scott Taylor, sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars retroactive, eleven three twenty-five.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, Carrie, thank you. All right, holiday event, we have Santa and the Grinch secured, right?
I don't know.
Right?
Right, Peter?
Fred wants a new outfit.
Fred's gonna be, uh...
I'd like to talk to your wardrobe, maybe.
We're gonna switch around.
All right, I need a motion, this is for a holiday event for the community.
We're, we're gonna just cut the time down a little bit, right?
We need to discuss the time, because I didn't put the time on here, we need to discuss the time.
I'll make a motion to approve the holiday event at the event center with pictures of Santa and the Grinch on Sunday, December 7th.
I'm laughing, thinking about, I've never seen Fred's face as red as it was, with his costume.
With the green suit, bright green suit.
Are we doing the cookie thing again?
Yeah, I'll apply the cookies.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, Carrie, thank you. All right, next up is the approval of the contract with Keller Williams for the two, uh, 112 McGee.
Make a motion for the approval of Keller Williams, we are agent to sell the property at 112 McGee Street, owned by the village of Watkins, again.
I was talking about, oops, sorry, I was talking about, sorry. Discussion. I did have the attorney review the agreement, he only had one minor change. Uh, the idea is that this will get, Dennis is gonna check for lead paint, it's one of the things we have to do, and then, uh, it'll, it'll go up, maybe as soon as tomorrow. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, Carrie, thank you. All right, now, Stephen, you can motion about the parking.
Uh, make a motion to institute, institute a seasonal parking program for coop park, inclusive of the kayak launch parking lots, to no parking from November 1st to March 31st, or no charge for parking, November 1st to March 31st.
I'll second.
Do we want to maybe move it up a week or a day, so that we don't get people saying they want to be refunded for the last couple of days?
Oh, right.
I think Sunday was...
I mean, if you, you're retro, you're retroactively setting it back to November 1st, this is the fourth.
Oh, so just say effective tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, effective November 5th to March 31st.
And then going forward, we can do it November 1st, because... Okay, all in favor? All right, aye, no opposed.
Aye.
Carrie. All right, uh, general audit, note that the amount is different, it's two oh eight six four eight fifty-five, any motion, please?
Fifty-five or sixty-five?
Two oh eight six four eight, sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
No, I wrote down fifty-five, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the general audit dated October 31st, twenty twenty-five, for the total amount of two hundred eight thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Was there an add, or was this a misfired calculation?
No, there was just add, it's always there, there was, the, uh, electric had the, they purchased the, those TCCs, the payment, the seventy-five percent being, we had to pay, that was forty-six thousand, something. Then we had to pay the, um, the Fraser, the six hundred, and there was one other thing on the...
Oh, I'm glad you found that.
Yes, I did. The big one was the electric.
What, what was it, Fred, for the electric, what was it called?
The, the TCCs, the, it's the...
The electric, um...
Power by, the lock rates in, in advance. We owe the next payment on it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, Carrie, thank you. Okay, board concerns, uh, A and B kind of go together, so I'd like to do the employee of the year again, if the board is in agreement.
That was great.
Fred had a idea of changing the form a little bit, did you end up changing that, Fred, or did you send that to me, I can't remember?
I did, didn't really, I changed, we changed it, not, not, nothing really much. Discuss maybe the approach on how to...
Right.
To do it, as far as nominations, and then it comes to the board, you guys can decide.
Yeah, we thought, instead of just, you know, counting, because it's not like a popularity contest, right?
Student council president.
I thought what was interesting last year is, you know, some people wrote some really good, robust justification, and so I think I'd like the board, and Fred made the recommendation, that, you know, we'll read them together and, and come up with a employee of the year. So, can we get that out to the department heads?
Yeah, I'll put it in the checkbook, the checks, so, so everyone will get it.
Oh, that'd be great.
That way they can turn it in privately.
Okay, and then, along with that, um, last year we did a board-sponsored luncheon, which I thought went really well. We need to pick a date, though. Because you know what's gonna happen, December's gonna be here, and we're gonna be like, whoa. SK, you, you have a lot of travel, so I can be pretty fairly open.
Yeah, I'm pretty...
Is that when we did it last year in December?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Let's look back and see when it was.
Wasn't it a Friday last week?
I thought it was the third week, it was right before Christmas.
Oh. I think you're right, let's see.
That would be...
Yeah, because it wasn't just the one we talked about doing it a little bit later, the night where everybody could go home or something like that?
Well, we just said a little later, because everyone splits afterwards anyway, so it makes sense.
Most of them leave at two thirty.
Especially if it's closer to like two o'clock, twelve, or one o'clock.
So it'd be December 19th?
What are you thinking?
On the 19th of December?
It's the Friday for Christmas.
Uh, okay. Thanks, Chris.
Does that work for everybody else?
I'm not sure I'm gonna be here.
You're not sure you're gonna be here?
I don't know, but we're going to Mississippi, so, train around when we need to...
Well, you're cooking.
I am?
You are now.
I'll have to send it from Mississippi.
When, when are you guys leaving?
I don't, I'm not sure, the boss has told me that, you know, sometime around at Christmas time, New Year's time, I don't...
So you really don't know?
Thank you. Hey, listen, I got a lot, I got a lot of bosses telling me what to do.
Well. No comment.
Well.
So, let's put it on for the 19th and hope Peter's here. Stace, can you check that date for us?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's fine. Friday before, we have a wedding.
Does the 12th work for everyone, too?
We have a wedding in the month of November 12th.
What, Stace?
The 12th we can, if, if we have a wedding, because there's a wedding.
Okay.
Doesn't work, for sure.
So let's, we'll put on the 19th. Okay, Christmas parade is December 5th, five to eight, line up on 7th. Play junior specios.
What did you say the time was on that, Laurie?
Five o'clock's the, with line up and time. Yeah. December 5th.
What time did we say we're gonna do the village lunch in here?
Noon.
Noon?
Good question, I didn't say that, but... Um, last year, Fred did a nice job decorating the truck.
Pete, Fred?
Oh, that's right, you have...
We're the partnership now.
Yeah, we'll have our suits, we'll have our suits on, man.
All right, uh, let's see, going down my list here, so the board, I wanted to make you aware that we spoke to an individual about a part-time building inspector, which we've been talking about for how many weeks and months?
Years.
So, the vision is, is that it would be very cyclical, so we are behind, we have got to get our businesses and our churches inspected, we're required by law to do it. Dennis, he's too busy... Um, Dennis, he's too busy right now, so we've got to get caught up, so we talked to an individual who's interested. It would be hammered out, get them done, and then once, if we need them for, you know, something else in the future, bring them back. So it's not a, it's not a long term.
Temporary part-time, basically.
Yeah. Um, we, so we had a part-time position that did this before and we cut it out because the code officer was doing both, but the load just that Dennis has just with vacant properties is, I mean, I mean, those are labor intensive because there's a lot of steps legally that we have to go through, so I would like the board's support to pursue this. It is not something that we budgeted, so we're gonna have to regroup and rebudget. The, the money that we're losing, however, because those permits costs, so, um, but bottom line is we've got to get caught up. Because somebody has a fire, we're, and you think about some of the restaurants with, you know, their egress and fire escapes and I think of a few that make me nervous, so. Do we have to vote on that, Fred?
Probably should, yeah.
Do we have a timeline? Estimates and stuff before we vote on it?
You mean as far as when?
Yeah, like.
Higher?
Yeah. How long?
We talked about starting in like January, end of the year, when things are quieter for businesses, because you don't want to disrupt the business in the middle of the summer. And then knocking through the list, which, like, you gotta have, is it, who, Barb pull that list for us?
I, I, I actually found it when Scott, when Scott was here, so I don't, she should probably run an updated list and they should probably compare that and make it easier. Because I already have all the information, so you don't have to duplicate everything at one moment. But they should probably compare, because I'm sure there's new businesses and some that left or whatever, and.
Yeah, so the most.
It's like six months.
At the most, and it would be like eight hours a week at the most.
Oh, this isn't a twenty hours a week?
Mm-mm. This person doesn't have that ability. Uh, I don't, I don't know that we need twenty hours a week. I think going through, I mean, I guess they could knock it out that way in a shorter period of time. You were with me.
Mm-hmm. I'm heading off for it.
Yeah.
I, I, we, I think we have to do it. Dennis can't do it. He's, he's got a list of things that I keep giving as priorities right now. So. All right, so we'll need a motion. Well, actually, let's wait until we bring it back. Yeah, let me bring it back because.
I'm all for it, I just think we should.
We gotta, we gotta.
Pay the person what is it?
Right.
Well, you kind of have it already because we posted it. You guys discussed that last time, you said like twenty to twenty-two or.
Right.
Whatever it was.
Right, there was a range, so we don't even know what the range is.
I can look it up. We've already.
It's twenty to twenty-five, but what this person's being hired at, all particulars will be on it.
Yeah, we gotta close the loop with him, um.
Yeah, right.
We just left it that. I needed to talk to you and.
Thanks, Greg.
I want to get to, get to list from Fred's office to see how many are we looking at here because we're losing money and there's a high risk. I mean, when's the last time you're caught? Yeah, so it's been like three years, yeah, and they're supposed to be done every year.
Well, I know I did Kukler Rocks last year, you were the last, last summer, I was there.
Dennis has been here a year.
You're close.
Okay, the other, I am gonna have an executive litigation that I'm gonna fill you in on, but does any of the other board members have concerns? Questions?
Yeah, but I would like to ask, I mean, this will be for you, um, about Brainy, do we want to, now that I got the civil service thing all ironed out?
Oh, yeah.
Do we want to have her start going around and looking at parking enforcement? I mean, it's kind of like a test run, but it's just kind of see, now that we're doing the park thing, that's different.
Figure out, do some thing on that, I haven't really thought much about it.
Oh my God, the kids love her.
Yeah.
I was down there yesterday.
I just, if you have somebody running around town doing tickets, at least you might start tagging more violations.
The lawyer just run reacted with it.
He did.
He likes to.
We need to, uh, if we're gonna do that, there's gotta be some identifying clothing because.
Yeah.
Some of her.
I'd say running around.
And then maybe it's something that, I mean, it's up to you guys. We wait till it gets a little warmer, but it doesn't matter to me. I mean, the officer's been doing a good job, but.
How actively you want to enforce, I think that's the goal.
Yeah, the, uh.
Went to, told him to put it in.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Do it.
Yeah, the amount of people that were parking the wrong way.
Slow down a lot.
It has. Amazing. All right, anybody else? Peter, no list tonight?
No. I'm just floating.
You tired?
Kinda.
Okay.
I need to get a nap today.
Oh, sorry. All right, I need a motion to move executive please for probation.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to move to accept the session. Have a good evening, you guys.
Thanks, guys.
See you, Charlie.
Somebody says.
Stace?
Somebody has a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, Carrie.